2017, the Ashland School Board, regular meeting. First, second item is pledge allegiance and the flag has been.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll call, we have two absent, both with notice, Sanders absent with notice and Steve, Keith is absent with notice. Next thing is minutes. Regular meeting, September 5th. Everybody get a chance to read?
I haven't changed.
Yep.
They have you on the members present, Ms. Glendian.
I'm okay with that.
Yeah. I might just want to change that.
Yeah. Thank you.
I'm making a motion to approve the minutes.
Yes, I know. A second, yes.
Any other amendments or changes? Turn it all in favors, three zero. My previous gentleman was this one, he was going to take speaker, but we actually have him less. Next item is privilege of the floor, anything on any of the agenda items from the audience? Kelly? Okay, thank you. Communications, budget development timeline for the 18, 19 budget.
Mrs. Temporino is at a professional development conference this week, so I am here tonight with the timeline and I think that you have in your packet, it's attachment two, looks like probably what needs to be set is the November 7th, school board budget presentation. So that's an opportunity to go through the budget. I think typically that's been, the November meeting has incorporated that work. Do you, I think last year maybe we didn't have policy and maybe started earlier.
Yeah, that'd be okay. Everybody okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
That will skip policy next. What time do you want to start? Do you want to start at 5:30, you want to start at 6:00?
What can you do?
I can do 5:30 if that's better for.
If that works for everybody.
That's fine.
We'll do 5:30.
5:30, great. And then, you know, typically to have a second evening, I think last year it might have been the very next evening, which could be November 8th, or possibly the week after, November 15th.
Is there a preference? I like the day after and get it done with.
The 8th, okay.
The 8th.
The 8th, okay. And do you want to do 6 o'clock or 5:30? What would you?
Can we start at 6:00?
Yeah, that's fine.
Yep, that's fine.
Did I hear 6:00?
Yes. Second shower.
Do you want to start at 6:00, Renee, on the 7th?
No, I think I can. I'll be slightly more presentable on the 8th than I.
You have to know that Mrs. Bartlett has been working very hard along with staff to get the first part of the budget work done.
First deliverative session. Do we want to have policy that night before? Down on February 6th, we have the first deliverative session, which is 6:30 and it says before board meeting.
No, we could do policy.
Because it says 6:30 before board meeting. Does that mean that we're starting at 6:00 or?
Usually the deliverative session, we start at 6:30 and it takes two and a half minutes and then we.
The deliverative session is before the board meeting?
It's, yeah, but at 6:30. That's how I read it, or I think that's how we've done it before.
That's my recollection.
Because I think we did it one year, we said it at 6:00 and then we all just hung around, twiddled our thumbs for a half hour.
And I think it was like the board meeting immediately following.
Yep, exactly. So we could do policy before, yeah.
Okay, so we'll just leave that as a regular night then.
Okay.
What night is that?
That was February 6th. We just have a regular.
And that's our regular meeting night, right?
Yes.
Let's hope that there's no snow this year. Last year it was quite a storm.
It was.
With that in mind, do we want to pick a second night for the first session, just in case?
What's the timeline that we have to, when do we have to?
There are.
By that next Saturday, I think.
Do you want to just make it for, can we make it for the 7th?
Yeah, we could do that.
She'll be held between the first and second Saturdays following the last Monday in January, inclusive of those Saturdays.
You got basically, basically a week, right David, to get it all done, Saturday to Saturday?
Yeah.
So I could make a snow date for this.
Yeah, so if we want to make a snow date for the 7th.
Yeah. It'd have to be pretty hairy though.
Right, that would, right.
Yeah.
And we had it in the cafeteria last year too, right? Not in the gym?
Yes, we did, yep. So we didn't need to set up the big gym for that.
No date of 2/7.
If that works.
Yep. Does that work for your schedule?
I believe it does.
There's a planning board meeting here, but they're in the caf, they're in here, I think. So we'll make sure we're in the caf, yep.
We all need to set up the gym for eight people.
Well, and the fact that we have a snow date. Now it won't snow.
Okay, that's good. Minutes, right, go ahead.
If we end up going on the snow date, are we still holding our meeting or are we just doing the deliverative session?
I, well, I suppose you could.
I'd hold the meeting.
Yeah, you could probably put on the meeting, just a snow, you know, a snow date for both.
Okay. So we would, we would do policy beforehand at 5:30?
Sure. Because we only have one meeting a month and if we didn't do that, you also have all the stuff that needs to be signed.
See how much time can block out.
Administrative reports, enrollment, principal's report, Shannon?
We added one student in third grade since the last report and can tell you that I believe we have two more kind of in the bullpen warming up. We've gotten a call that they're at some point going to come and so we're just waiting to get someone in to register them. So potentially two more, I think, a first and a second grader.
So we're at 160 now then, instead of 159?
No, we're at 159 with the new third grader and then possibly two more. So it'll be 161.
Principal's report?
I've got some things for you. I don't know if we should just go through this first. Yeah, then we could do. Yeah, so let's just look first at the, at the paper in front of you. I kind of gave you some bulleted dates of some things coming up over the next few weeks. We have a lot of events going on with the Cliff Grant, the Fisher Cats Reading Challenge just kicked off, our middle school project week groups, a few kids are going to go present to the Ashland Women's Club, Picture Retake Day, the Fireman's muster, of course, because Fire Prevention Week. We actually bumped that back a week so that Mr. Heath would be back in town for that, which is good. We have our first early release for staff professional development coming up as well as the Halloween Parade. And the Halloween Parade is on Halloween at 1:00. That is the wrap of dates. A brief mention of our Staff of the Month, Jen Lightford and Teresa Maryfield. Talked about Teresa Maryfield and the work that she did to get our playground, our new playground equipment under wraps. There's also, also nominated her for this, for this month because of some of the work that she's done with kids too, that aren't your typical art students, that she has somehow managed to find a niche for them and the things that, the work that they've done, you can see around the school building, has just been incredible already, starting right out with some really neat projects, so. And Teresa is a leader in the middle tier and does a lot of work leading middle tier teachers as well as a specialist, so I really appreciate that. Jen Lightford recently spent three weeks helping me redesign the bus routes. She also rides the bus now, so for that right there, she is a goddess, I've said, but she's been great in kind of helping coordinate all that, time the routes, time the pickups and she's also an employee that jumps right in and helps whenever we need anything, if we're shorthanded on something, she's the first one to volunteer, so really appreciate that with Jen. Just to let you know, we have a, an ad posted for a specialized paraprofessional as well as a Title I Assistant. That Title I Assistant position is part-time and it will come out of the Title I Grant. As I just mentioned, we did a bus route update. Our concern was that the buses were, the bus was getting to school in the morning very late, so our little ones that need breakfast aren't, weren't having a lot of time to eat breakfast. So we kind of re-look, replanned the route and with some new students that had moved in, made sure that it was as effective and efficient as possible. So now the bus gets here in enough time for the little ones to eat and also we are extending the time that students ride the bus at the end of the day. They were up to almost an hour, so now it's, it's less, 40 minutes, 45 minutes, which has been really good.
And maybe just to interject, we have had some service issues relative to the bus. We've had to cancel some games because they've not been able to provide a bus. We've also had the route bus late because they were providing transportation either for some other district or for us for, for a game. It's not unique to us, I have connected with SAU 48 and they are experiencing, I'd say, some transition issues as well. So I, they have, I believe SAU 48 has reached out to the company. I do plan to do the same to see if Shannon and I can sit with the upper management to at least express our concerns and look for solutions, but it has definitely been a challenging start relative to, to transportation.
It has been, so I apologize for any issues we've had in delays with, with sports games and things that have been canceled because of that. I know that's affected people. We've done our best to try to notify people ahead of time, but there are times that it happens, you know, right before something is supposed to kick off or the kid's just supposed to leave for a game, so that's been hard. I want to let you know, we have quite a good group of collaborative committees working this year. We have the problem solving team, math, literacy, Cliff Committees, a theme committee, they're all working on setting SMART goals, creating action plans around those SMART goals, doing professional readings and on Friday mornings, we have our all-staff collaborative time and each of these committees is taking turns leading those, kind of those little morning mini PD sessions, which has been really great and a good way to have everyone communicate but also share some of the great things that are happening throughout the school. We've allowed, been able to do this because we have enough staff, our paras are able to cover the duty so that we can have all the professional staff in the room at once every week for a half an hour. And we really are, have gotten really good at using that time efficiently and effectively. Even though it's only half an hour, we get a lot done and it's a great little way to get everyone together to talk about what's going on in school. So that's been great. Jan Panagoulis, who is our long-term sub for math, has worked her magic and gotten our kids excited for a mathalon team. She has connected us with Lake Street and Mathalon, it has five meets beginning in November. She's even got a potential list of students who are interested. The cost is a one-time fee each year of $25 and we are looking at the possibility of being a part of that and also maybe talking about a stipend for a mathalon advisor so that we could give a teacher a stipend for promoting and working with kids to practice for this and taking kids to these meets, provided we have buses.
So in the contract, the extracurricular stipends would come forward before the board, before one is added in. So with the board's permission, we would like to be able to do that. I think it's a great activity for students to be involved in and Shannon does have some funds in the extracurricular to support a stipend. So we can certainly bring that forward at a later date so that you have more time to think about it, but do you want to at least put that out there that that is a direction we, we really appreciate the opportunity to bring to our students.
It could be fine, just need to put a number to it.
These are after-school?
So they are typically after-schools?
The meets are three to fives. Three to five. Like I said, they are November, January, February, March and April. How many kids, do you think? At least 10, but they always bring 10 and then some backup and it has to be, I think the rules are like 70% have to be seventh and eighth graders. So, but like I said, Mrs. Panagoulis has already gotten a lot of interest, I think, stirred up from the kids and it's something that during our flex time, we can create that mathalon team can meet and do practice stuff during the day. So it doesn't require after-school stuff that's could conflict with sports and things like that. The only thing would be the meets, but I think the time, and the first one is set for November and there's a specific date, that's when they're going to set the future dates for, the actual dates for the other months. So, you know, this is completely new to us. I think years and years ago, we had a mathalon. It's a really exciting opportunity to bring it back and be a part of what's going on in this area with that, so I think it would be awesome for the kids.
So we can bring a formal proposal even in the November meeting, I know it's the budget meeting, but we could add that as and at that point, maybe Shannon will have an idea of who would like to, you know, take that on as an extracurricular activity.
Do you know ballpark what you were thinking?
I think it's probably, Shannon, do you have a ballpark of what you were thinking for a stipend?
Well, I think the, we have stipends, the typical stipend is $750 to $1,000, depending on what it involves and, you know, typically it takes a year to get a handle on really what it involves. So it would be around that area probably.
And I think that's Shannon just wants to frame some data for the board and then give an opportunity, again, we were thinking coming back in November, I know we have the budget, but if people had questions about it, but just so that people understand what the, how she set up her data report, which she does have to share with you.
Yeah, I do have, so let me, we can talk while this is setting up about, we have an assessment update on there. We are required by law to, to do a dyslexia screening now for students kindergarten, first grade. So we are in the process of getting a DIBELS program, which is an early screening for reading and math, which we are going to use for early literacy and dyslexia and math screening for our students. Also, I want to let you know that in conjunction with all other SAU 48 schools, our eighth graders are going to test with the PSAT 8 and 9. The window for that opened like last week. SAU 48 has determined they want all the students to do it in November. So Carrie Samora and I worked with the college board to get that set up, to order test booklets and all the materials that we need and I think our plan to do it is this first or second week in November. The breakdown of what the test is, you can see, I included that just so you can see what, what the expectation is for time. We always have to allow for the extended time, so we planned for the extended time amount. So that will be happening in November for just our eighth graders. We also have a new state test, it's no longer the Smarter Balance Test. It's called the New Hampshire Assessment. It includes ELA math and writing, that's a new component. And also they have kind of included in this package, the science test, so it won't, will no longer be the Kneecap Science Test either. And traditionally it was fourth and eighth grade, this year it will be fifth and eighth grade, so the fourth graders who tested science last year will test again this year, which is great.
They'll be awesome.
They will be awesome. You can see the huge reduction in time with science. I think that primarily has to do with the, Kneecap had a really great inquiry, you know, activity that they did as a part of their, I'm thinking that cutting it down four hours means that that's probably what's been removed, just too bad. They, I don't know if you want to talk about how the new test was described, we don't know if it will have the same kind of depth of knowledge and expectation for real critical thinking that the Smarter Mouse Test has, but it's a little bit shorter, again with the writing piece, which is new. So we just have to wait and see what that's going to be like. The window opens in March and it's March to June, so we will try to get that scheduled at a really busy time of year around everything else and see how it goes.
So for the PSAT, Shannon, the Plymouth Regional High School will be using that to also help determine courses that are appropriate for students when they sign up for high school courses. In the past, they had used the NWA results, but because of the PSAT, you're planning not to do the NWA, correct, with eighth grade?
Yes. We have, we were picked this year to do the KNEC test, which is great, so our eighth graders are not going to have kind of back-to-back-to-back testing, but they will do this in November. We did not do the beginning of the year NWA, knowing that the, the PSAT was going to happen somewhere pretty early in the year. And typically that's what the high school uses anyway, that mid-year test. So, but also I think the really interesting thing about this is it can link to Khan Academy. So the results automatically populating Khan Academy kind of work loops or kind of practice loops. So if there are skill areas from the PSAT that you're, that the student is weak in, the loops that are set up in Khan Academy are, are there to reinforce and help move that student forward specifically. So that's a, I think that's a really powerful kind of personalized way that this data is, can help kids. But again, it's all really new to us, so we have to kind of figure out how that all works.
And the state assessment at grade 11 in New Hampshire is the SAT. So the PSAT is kind of a preparation piece for taking the SAT, which is now the state assessment.
I can't get my car phone to open up. Which it's just a couple slides anyway, so I'm just going to give you a copy of it. We're talking about all the assessments that we do, we pulled together this data for you. You know, every time we kind of, I do this presentation, the data gets heavier and heavier just because we're, we're looking at longitudinal data now, so we have more than one or two years to look at. So I thought maybe just kind of giving you a broad overview of it would be helpful. You can see we have Smarter Balance data to start out with math and reading. And really what you're looking at is the three-year results of that test. So the blue column is going to be the very first year that that, that the Smarter Balance Test was administered, the yellow is the second and the green is the third.
For that cohort of students.
For that cohort of students. So the very first blue column, you see under 2024, those were last year's fifth graders. The first year they took the Smarter Mouse Test, they were third graders. So this follows the groups of students. You can see the difference in the very first time the students took it. It was a baseline meeting for us, the second year, we really worked hard to kind of hype them up for the test, incentivize them and, you know, put a lot of effort and energy into trying to make this a really special opportunity for them. And I think it worked in their engagement and their kind of perseverance in the test, I think we saw that in the classroom. Last year, as we were moving forward, we really wanted, instead of kind of creating that hype over it, we wanted them to feel like this was a normal part of what we're doing and not something special, so that their performance on this was something that we expected them to do their best. And clearly, as you can see from the results, that was not the case. We had some weird testing things that happened. Some of the documents were wrong, kids worked on a certain pre-thay, a pre-work kind of lesson and then took a different test, we had some confusion with that. And we were having kids that were getting stressed out about, the more that we kind of hyped the test itself and kind of made a big deal out of it, it was harder for some kids too, because they were really anxious about it. So we wanted to ramp down from that too. So in kind of trying to look at this as a normal part of what we have to do and a snapshot for us of the data and understanding their learning, you know, we really saw a drop in performance in math and in literacy. Our literacy scores were, are traditionally higher and we usually are pretty close to the state score and in some cases in our second year, obviously almost every grade level was above the state proficiency percentage. But again, you can see how that, the third year dropped off. Connecting that or looking at comparatively to the NEEWE test, much different scenario. The NEEWE test is a set number of questions, they know the numbers, the kids, because they take the test regularly, it's adaptive test, so it gets harder the better they do. But they also know that within an hour and an hour and a half at the most, they're going to be done and some of the Smarter Balance testing, they were testing four hours at a time with breaks. But really the sustained effort and energy that has, that goes into the Smarter Balance Test is much different than the NEEWE test. So they came off taking the Smarter Balance Test, fourth and eighth graders took the Kneecap Science Test and then turned around and, and with the exception of eighth grade, the rest of the students turned around and took the end of your NEEWE test. I could make a recommendation, really thinking about this, I feel like the NEEWE data is almost obsolete for us, even though it does give us turnaround data right away, because we only do it three times a year, beginning, end of the year, middle end of the year for kindergarteners. Right now, we have two programs that we're using that give us data every single day about student growth and performance and teachers are learning to use that to drive instruction and target areas of weakness. So for us, I think that data is far more useful and I think maybe if we can step away from some of these mandated testing or the testing that even that we put in place, I think we'll see performance in all other aspects go up when we do have to test, because it will be something different, it won't be something that we are doing, because kids are feeling like we're doing constantly. I don't know, Kelly, if you want to speak to the programs that we are using and the data that we get, and whether that is, you know, it's more useful than NEEWE data or not, I'm going off what.
Yeah, we use Achieve 3000 for literacy. It is an informational text program. I am learning as we go with, with the students and they've been practicing their skills in reading, it's done independently on the, on the computer. There's, I get a report every day on the students' growth, on what they need help in, so I target what I do in small groups with the skills these, these students need. It's a learning process for me, it's something totally new. I'm upfront with the students saying, we're going to do this together. And each day it's like, Mrs. Avery, who scored the most points? Because it's a point system, who scored the most points in the class? And it's funny, because every day it's a different student and we celebrate that student, saying, okay, nice job. Some students rush and I have to say, you have to slow down, but it gives me data every day that we use that program. So far, I'm learning, it gives me the information I need and I'm learning as we go as to my planning for each, each separate group. So I piggyback that with literature, because Achieve 3000 is all non-fiction and to give them depth in both, I do small groups with those with literature too. But like I said, it's new, the first month, I've been, you know, going through it. We did have a training, but in our, to actually get in and train, use it with real students makes a big difference. Today I got a report on students' LexIAs that they changed from when we took the beginning pre-reading in September and I have nine students whose LexIAs scores, which means their readability and ability to read, have increased over the month. And tomorrow I'm going to discuss it, you know, with, with the class and, and celebrate those students that have increased their LexIAs score. I get a report daily from this, from this program.
So I think what, what Kelly's trying to say, the data that we're getting now is real-time and it's actionable and that's what we need. We need to be able to adjust and target every day based on where the kids are, if they've taken a step forward, what else do they need to take a step forward. Where NEEWE data is great data to have, it's, it's, you know, there's a huge span of time in between and so it doesn't give us kind of that real interactive read that we, that we can put to use better, I think, in with our instructional practices.
It's five steps. There's five steps for this program. It's a pre-reading poll for each article that either I assign or that the program automatically assigns us. Then there's the article to read, then there's the activity, which is multiple choice questions. Then there's a thought question, which they have to incorporate some writing skills in and answer that, and then there's a, a post-reading poll and then they have to defend their answers, like why did you disagree or why did you agree? And so we're working on the writing skills too, to get better at writing.
So our goal this evening was to. So our goal this evening was to share some data with you. And certainly, it's a lot to take in. So our thought was, I know, again, November, we're planning to do the budget, but maybe if you have questions on any specific parts of it, you can certainly reach out to me. And we can certainly, you know, connect in advance. Or there's, you know, certainly during the meeting, that'd be something helpful for everybody to have exposure to. And, you know, certainly, the conversation about the NWA, that is certainly, that's a school-level piece as an assessment, and it may be something as a staff to really look at whether or not that makes sense to continue with that and, you know, adapt that way. But really, the goal was to at least bring forward a little data to give you a sense of the results of the former state assessment tests, which now, as you know, will be changing. So that whenever you make a change, although they have indicated that they should be comparable in terms of being able to compare scores, you know, I think, you know, from a common sense standpoint, if things are different, it is harder to compare apples to oranges. So, you know, certainly, again, if you have questions, please reach out.
And I just want to point out, we have, there's two slides on here, the math committee slides and the ELA committee. So we want to see the actions that they are taking right now to analyze data and to kind of make significant changes over the course of the school year, and their goals for changing these things. They're doing a lot of data crunching to look at the bigger picture, right down to the individual student picture. So I think really, our math committee's huge and our ELA committee's huge, and we're really working, looking at, make sure we do a consistent implementation of the math and focus program that's going to result in better results for math language, math practices, math skills across the board consistently. That's what we need. It's really the consistency of that and the writing piece for the ELA committee. So I'm thinking probably midway through the year, I'd love to have those committees come and kind of talk to you about what they are focusing on, where they've gone with this, and what impact they've seen in student performance, even to date. I think that would be helpful for you guys to get that feedback. The last two slides include the science data. We just got the science results out, so I have a copy of the fourth and the eighth-grade reports for you. I gave you one little piece of it in that PowerPoint, but there's more to this packet. So if you want to take one of each, and then if you have any other questions about that, too. We've done a really great job of staying, I think, consistent with the state results, which is a little snapshot I put on the PowerPoint. You look at the little bar graph, kind of down at the bottom, the dot graph, you can see that where the states range scores, and we are either at, above, or a little below in basically every category for fourth and eighth grade science. And our scores have been pretty consistent as well, which is a really great thing. So again, I know it's a lot of data, a lot of numbers, but, you know, I have pockets of data that goes along with this. If you want more in-depth stuff, you can give me a call out. I can email it to you, or we can sit and talk about it, whatever you would like to do. I'm more than willing to do that. The data is our friend. Like, it doesn't show what we want it to show. That just gives us a really clear picture of what we have to do to improve, that's all. And that's how we're looking at it, because that's the only useful way to look at it.
So I can share with you that at this time, 93.3% of the budget has been spent or encumbered. This is about 1% more than last year at this time, but not unusual. Items to note, there are some savings and some overages in salaries due to changes in staffing. Special education professional services and psychology professional services will be reimbursed by the IDA grant, which is our special education grant. As we move forward, we will continue to refine encumbrances.
Anybody have any questions? Good job.
She did a great job, didn't she? I even have a facilities update.
You're doing a good job. You've got to be Mary Ann Trish.
That's right. So I can share that the facilities committee met on September 28th and reviewed the current capital improvement plan. There was lengthy discussion regarding priorities for the upcoming budget work, and Ms. Temporino will provide an updated capital improvement plan with the budget presentation in November.
Thank you. Business of the Board, Tri-County Community Action Package, the request.
So we have Mr. Boshin here from Tri-County CAP this evening, and you do have some materials in your packet, starting with the patch.
Stand or sit?
Whatever your preference is.
A little friendly. Bill Morland. From group. Well, Chairman Deanna, I know, it was a little over two years ago, Mike Cofflin, the prior CEO, was here, and presented you pretty much the same information that I am. I added a little more, I think, information than he shared last time. I've stated that if we were to allow this property to go to like commercial use, such as a doctor's office or dentist's office, if somebody wanted it for that, it would put it back in the tax rolls. Also, Tri-County CAP, everyone knows, has been through a bit of a reorganization. And if you've looked at the news recently, we've transitioned out one of our programs up in Bethlehem, and the new substance use disorder facility up there is being built by ahead, and we've transitioned it over to North Country Health Consortium, because they can run it on a medical model. So we're trying to right-size. We're looking for where we may be able to add to help our constituency as an anti-poverty agency. And we're looking at where we can save on costs. And if we were able to right-size the program to another location that we have in that building, although we use it for meetings and so forth also, it's not like the space, all the space that is in our program is not being utilized at all. But we would probably save the agency about 30,000 a year, which we could put back into helping our constituency. It costs about $100,000 a year fully loaded to run that building, not including depreciation. So that's why we're looking at if there is some room to change the deed restrictions. And I want to say, this is a proposal. I'm open to anything else. One problem we have right now is we cannot even get a real estate agent who will entertain trying to help us sell that building anymore. The thought was, the library might move in there. And of course, now, the understanding is they're not interested in that building anymore.
David's a library trustee.
That's my understanding, is that they're not interested in that building anymore. Or they're not going to be able to, because it's been voted down three times now, I believe.
It's been, well, the library trustees are still interested in the building, but we're rather discouraged about the voters' response to our.
And you are looking at other locations, too. Is that true?
No, we're not.
You're not? Okay.
At present time, looking at other locations.
Well, then my information is incorrect on that.
Well, it'll probably change over time. We're not looking at other alternatives, but I don't know what we're going to do about the old school this year, if we do anything.
And frankly, our bank is trying to, willing to work with us if we do sell it. We'd have to apply all the funds from that building, and we'd be working on the loan-to-value ratio to try and allow that to happen. So it is putting some burden on the agency, and that's why we're asking that this be entertained. And again, if someone wanted to come back and say, "Well, we like this, but we don't like that," I'm willing to be open to that. I'm leaving January 5th, and I'd like to have some direction by then. And of course, if the answer is the same as last time, we will continue to be in that building. But again, that's funds that aren't going back directly into the community, because we're having to support that building, which was a decision of prior administrations from four or five years ago and before.
What's, you know, what's the outstanding balance in that building?
Right now, I think it's around, I could have to check, but I think it's around 600,000, but it could be more, because, see, it's grouped in. We'll other, another loan, and we apportion it out. That's why I don't have it off the top of my head. But I could get that tomorrow by email.
I was just curious, because if it cost you $100,000, if you dumped the building, you'd be out of it in six years. And by year seven, which is a good return on investment, you'd be $100,000 ahead of the game.
Right.
So to take a loss on it, to make a deal with the library or something at a reasonable number that the town could afford, we'd get you out from under that. That would be out.
Well, we're looking, really, we're losing about 30,000 a year on it if we stay there. So that's, would be about 20.
But you just said you're spending $100,000 a year to maintain it.
We're somewhere, right, but that's about 30.
$100,000, that could go somewhere else.
Right, but we're losing 30. If we went somewhere else, it would only be a $30,000 incremental amount. It wouldn't be, we wouldn't recapture the full $100,000.
Maybe more if it's a smaller building.
Well, we've already assessed the amount of space we would need, and we've assessed what it would cost us, because there's still indirect and overload that we have, overhead that we have that gets applied to the programs. That doesn't go away. So the incremental savings is 30,000. And if we did drop the price, we'd have to come back to bring it to the voters again. When we, let's say we came up with a, because it had to go before the voters each time, so my understanding is we'd have to go.
You wouldn't have to bring it, they would have to.
Well, exactly, yes.
You can drop the price at any time.
Right. But they still would have to bring it back to the voters.
Yep. Is anybody on our way in, or? I mean, my thoughts, and I'm not speaking for the board, I'm just speaking for my thoughts, is I have no interest in changing it. That was what was agreed upon, that was what was voted on by the people. I think the process to change it all would require it to go as a warrant article in front of, and I honestly don't see it passing. It was a tenacious item. It took David years to negotiate that deal.
Yeah, we weren't, well, it was the school board.
It was a school board, but you were part of the budget committee and all that other stuff.
Not, but it did take.
It took years to come to that agreement, to finally get something that the voters would vote for. Changing it, modifying it, I don't believe it would go through as a warrant article. I think it would be the same situation as what the library has dealt with so far. It would get voted down. I just don't see it changing. I personally don't have an interest in changing it, but I'm just want to vote, so.
I'm on the same side as Glenn.
Okay.
So I think that's where we're at at this point.
Well, I thank you.
We have two people absent, but I think that's the majority on the board at that point.
Yeah.
I mean, I feel free situation, but it was negotiated. They put a lot of work into it.
And even a doctor's office, you're still going to have individuals coming to visit the doctor's office that we don't want by our campus. So that's why it was such a stringent negotiation. You know, our kids have to walk by that building to get to our gymnasium. They walk by the building to go home and come to school. So, you know, there's a lot of things other than, you know, credit would be that. And I understand a doctor's office or a dentist's office seems like it's good, but, you know, the individuals we don't want on our campus would visit that building. And it's why those restrictions were put there is to try to keep our kids safe.
Okay. Well, I thank you for your time. I mean, it's just, now that gives me some direction I want to do next.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
I do, I appreciate it very much. All right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Chairman, is business of the superintendent general operating expenses.
You have manifest, oops, 2, is it? Hold on a second. My cheat sheet, there it is. 2006 included in your agenda. There's nothing unusual to report. You'll notice payments for granite state glass and Milford flooring, and that was the work done to improve safety at the main entrance and the playground entrance.
Anybody have any questions on it? Take a motion to approve manifest 2006.
006 for me.
Renee, second. Yep. All in favor? All three zero. Thank you.
Marilyn, would you mind passing that around, just so that we don't forget to sign that?
Policies, third and final reading. Need a motion to approve the third and final reading of the policies. 1131, strong family and community partnership. 1314, public gets donations. And policy 5143, use of restraint and suppression. Renee, second.
Second.
Yep. Any questions? If not, all in favor? Three zero. Thank you. Do you want me to read the whole policy or just the numbers?
Just the numbers is good.
Second reading, policy 4114.1, need a motion to approve for its second reading. Yep. I've got a new second.
Second.
All in favor? Three zero.
Take all the second reading.
Policy 4144, I heard that negotiation. Approval for second reading. Yep.
Second.
All in favor? Three zero. Policy 5149.1. Yep.
Second.
Renee. All in favor? Three zero. Policy 5123. Yep.
Yep.
All in favor? Three zero. Policy 6110.
Second.
Renee. All in favor? Three zero. Policy 6120. Yep.
Second.
Renee. All in favor? Three zero. Policy 6161.
Yes.
Yep.
Second.
Renee. All in favor? Three zero. Policy 6167.
Yes.
Yep.
Second.
And Renee. All in favor? Three zero. Policy 6170. Yep.
Second.
Renee. All in favor? Three zero. Policy 6171. Yep.
Second.
Renee. All in favor? Three zero. Policy 6172.
And that's rescinding.
We got a vote to rescind.
Only vote.
Yep.
Second.
Renee. All in favor? Three zero. Policy 6177. Yep.
Second.
All in favor? Three zero. Policy 6180. Yep.
Second.
Renee. All in favor? Three zero. Now, the next policy, we were talking about sending it back to policy. We had some new guidelines, some stuff added that came in after we had looked at this policy. So we need to add five more pieces, I think, because we have 12 listed, and now the new state guidelines have 17 pieces listed. So we need to add the other five. So what I'd like to do is have a motion to approve this. Yep.
Yes.
And then Renee. And then a motion, and then a vote to not vote.
No vote.
So all in favor would be zero. All opposed. Zero three. So we'll send that back to policy.
Thank you.
First reading, policy 6166. I will read these, because it is the first reading for the television also. 6166, school district property. Take a motion to approve unless there's, Renee. Any typos or anything that we see? This is our first ring, time through. If not, all in favor? Three zero. Policy 6173, instruction of temporarily homebound students. Take a motion to approve. Yep.
Second.
Renee. Any questions or comments on that? If not, all in favor? Three zero. Policy 6181.1, extended learning opportunities. Take a motion to approve. Yep.
Second.
Renee. Any questions or comments? If not, all in favor? Three zero. Policy 8345, board member conflict of interest. Yep.
Second.
Renee. Anything on that? All in favor? Three zero. Policy 9367, quorum. Yep.
Second.
Renee. Anything on that one? If not, all in favor? Three zero. Privilege of the floor, too? Anything from the floor? That was pretty interesting. You get all that data, all that policy, you get all that policy stuff for your report?
Yeah.
Pretty interesting stuff there. Announcements, SEU board meeting to be determined, please.
We have a date of October 17th if we feel we'll have a quorum.
What time?
6 o'clock at the Hammersley Building.
I can make that. Thank you.
I cannot make that. I have a conflict. Want us to email you anyway?
I already said that I can make it if I have to. I'd really rather not, because I've been traveling for five days by the time that comes around. And I'm just getting back home. But if we need it for a quorum, I can make it.
And we're checking in with folks now, so we'll, we'll give you an update.
Tuesday, November 7th, 2017, policy review committee.
So I think we just.
You just decided not to do that?
Correct.
So that will not be happening. Instead, we'll have our regular school board meeting at 5:30.
5:30 for the budget.
For the budget.
Budget presentation?
So our regular meeting will start at 5:30 on November 7th for the budget presentation. Doing any evidence, or is there a non-public?
On my end.
No need for a non-public. We will have a need for a non-meeting at the end of our meeting. Is there anything else from anybody? Is that enough on the plus side?
That was fine.
Did the answer.
Nothing else, I'll take a motion to adjourn. All in favor? 3-0. We're adjourned. We do have a non-meeting for negotiations.